Mr. Reba, roll call please.
Mr. Bonomo, Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fiume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay, Mr. John.
Here.
Mr. Mahalik.
I'll put this straight through the phone tonight.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Garcella.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
Announcements of executive sessions held as follows. February 17th, personnel and in special education early intervention programs. February 23rd, executive budget meeting on personnel. February 25th, personnel. Dr. Butler, announcements and recognition.
Thank you, Mr. John. As Mr. Denotti's coming down, I would like to read verbatim a letter I received from an interested patron regarding our boys' basketball team. The letter reads as follows. Dear Coach Joseph, I wanted to take a moment to tell you about an experience I had with some of your players. We were on vacation with our family at Disney World last December. While dining at the Rainforest Cafe, we were seated when a very large group of teenage boys were seated all around us, which happened to be the Hazleton Area Basketball Team. They were on two sides of our table and took up a large portion of the side of the restaurant where we were dining. My husband and I braced for a loud and unruly dinner. What took place was nothing short of wonderful. The young men were well behaved, polite, and cordial. The respect they displayed to the waitresses and waiters and the patrons around them shows through to their core characters. It is easy for a bunch of teens who are away from their parents to be even more boisterous than normal. It shows that these kids have great sportsmanship on and off the court. I stopped a small group of the boys in the souvenir shop on our way out because I wanted them to know, or want to know where they were from. The boys were very kind and respectful. Please pass along my congratulations to the basketball coach. Thank you, Mr. John.
You're welcome.
And congratulations to Coach Joseph. Mr. Denotti.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Hazleton Area School District, I would like to recognize three students that placed in the top three positions of the Hazleton Area School District Spelling Bee that was held in January 2016. First place, Landon Wolf. You would come down, Landon. Landon is the son of Stephen and David Wolf. He is a Drums Elementary Middle School student in the seventh grade. Hobbies are baseball, basketball, theater, and band. Landon Wolf. Second place, and the top sixth grade student speller, Ms. Sabria Shake. Sabria is the daughter of Amy and Kamal Shake. She is a Drums Elementary Middle School student in the sixth grade. Her hobbies are dancing, acting, reading, and singing. Sabria Shake. And our third place student is Gabriella Terrasino. Gabriella is the daughter of Melanie and Anthony Terrasino. She again is a Drums Elementary Middle School student. She is in the sixth grade. Her hobbies and interests are softball, basketball, exercising. Favorite subject is math, and she also likes photography. Gabriella Terrasino. Other students received awards from McDonald's, from the Hazleton Standard Speaker, who are sponsors of our spelling bee, and they also received awards from a group of Hazleton Area School District administrators. These are the top three students in our Hazleton Area School District Spelling Bee. Congratulations. All right, next, I have the privilege to recognize the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School Administrative Team, Mr. Walton and Mrs. Cupshaw, if you'd come down. In addition, I would also like to recognize the entire Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School faculty for receiving the designation of 2016 Distinguished Title I School. The designation was awarded by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Division of Federal Programs. Schools were chosen based on student achievement, student progress, and student growth. In addition to the administration and faculty, I would also like to thank and congratulate the students, as well as the parents and guardians from the Hazleton, or the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School. It is because of their hard work and dedication that this award is possible. Once again, Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School, 2016 Distinguished Title I School.
Mr. John, may I just add that this distinction is significant for the district. This is the kind of progress, the kind of academic growth, the kind of achievement we're looking for in our schools. Heights Terrace is one of just a small cadre of schools that was recognized for this award. This is a very special recognition. I'm so proud of our administrators at Heights, the staff, the faculty, the students. Just a tremendous, tremendous achievement.
Public comments directed to the board and agenda items only. Donna Todd, number 29 and 56.
Hi, my name is Donna Todd. I'm representative of the Security Union, SPFPA Local 506. I just noticed that we're purchasing three more cars. I hope you have plans for them because we have two now that are virtually sitting unused, one down at Drums and the other one over at the Hazleton Career Center. We have, I think, 12 school police officers, and now we're going to have four cars because I'm assuming one is going to go to the director of security. So I just hope they're going to be used instead of just sitting around.
One quick comment on the cars. Actually, two of them needed paint and bodywork, so we have them in the career center. So they're kind of serving a dual purpose, giving the career center kids some experience painting them and repairing them, and then we're turning them over to security after the career center's finished with them.
Okay, is the security and police budget one and the same?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The other one is more of information gathering, a question on number 56. Does that mean that if an administrator gets $100 a day for unused vacation now because of the factoring, that might be 150 or 175?
It's actually going to go the other way. It's going to be less per day when the calculation's made. This actually goes back into the 90s with the Act 93 Compensation Plan, where administrators were given, when they have unused vacation days, this doesn't apply to sick, only vacation days, there's a calculation, and you would divide by 220 in the past. And we did, through our state audit finding, we're told we should be using 260.
So it'll actually go down.
So it'll actually be less per day than more, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Donna, I'll just comment on 29 for you, the vehicles. I think you will see that there's a plan being developed now with the new chief in utilization of the police officers and the ability to respond if necessary to other schools or locations. As you're probably aware, that in the state now, there's a preferred way of handling situations because we have our own police department. They expect our police department to actually handle the situations in the school, be the first responders, and in order to do that, I think it's going to be necessary for our people to get from one location to another, not in private vehicles if that's the case. So although you may see one sitting at Drums, the purpose behind that is that if an incident occurs in Freeland, that person can leave Drums and respond to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Mr. Fiume.
Mary Ann Molandini, number 56.
My question has to be addressed.
Thank you. Casey Hersheim, number 39 and 93.
In regards to agenda item number 39, I had a question about past legal proceedings reported as taking place during Dr. Shepperson's term as superintendent. There was another private preschool kindergarten provider in the area that had expressed concern specifically about kids who are ready to enter first grade, kids with, say, September 15th birthdays. Now currently, in your policy, there is a note that says children demonstrating readiness for entry will be considered with a written request from the parent, a recommendation from the district psychologist, as well as a recommendation from the superintendent. As a private preschool and kindergarten provider, I just wanted to check in with the board, also talk about a specific measurable goal that can be attached to this term of readiness so that it is applied through all local private education venues and equally exactly to all students in the area, something that would be in writing and provided to all of the private schools servicing kindergarten students in the area. Do you have any intention to make an actual what is readiness definition so that students can be prepared, teachers, private school teachers, no?
Ms. Hersiem, Mr. Denotti, and myself have spoken about that very issue in terms of what defines readiness, both socially and academically. So very, point well taken, and that's certainly something that we'll see further discussion moving forward.
But at this point in time, there's no actual definition of the parameter of readiness, or is there a guide that they'll be using for September, for this coming year, for students who have a September 20th birthday right now in a private kindergarten class that want to enter first grade next year?
Not at this point, Ms. Hersiem, and certainly not that the board has discussed and seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, 93. Explain your thoughts and the plan, and will this affect tonight's recommendations? Mr. John.
I'll let somebody else explain that, Mr. Reba.
Just a few words, you know, from coming to our board meetings, we have several of these requests usually every month. Mr. John's been saying over a year that we need to do something about the policy. So basically, by approving number 93, it takes out that provision that we pretty much deny these administratively, so when they come to the board, the requestor's actually trying to appeal our denial. So the board then would have to decide whether to waive the fees or not. So by doing this, it takes out that provision, which pretty much will not allow them to get to the board level. Now, if the board wants to change the policy to make different rates for different uses of facilities, or to reclassify the requestor's status if they're nonprofit, or something like that, that's probably the next step in this.
I think, Casey, what you have to look at is if you're running a program on a Friday night, Saturday, or Sunday, you're probably looking at the cost of over $2,000 for security and maintenance. I have no problem with free rental, but I do have a problem with providing the free services, to be honest with you.
Can groups opt out of security or maintenance or clean up after themselves? It's never been allowed in the past?
No.
Okay.
No, but that's one of the reasons why.
And just to expand, the last request on the back page there, or next to the last page of 93, when they're using our auditorium equipment, we've had problems in the past of the equipment being damaged, broken, so we updated the high school a few years ago, and from that point, we make the requestor use a specified person.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Childs, several topics.
Thank you very much, Mr. John, the board. I will go through these in chronological order. First question is about number 10. That particular group came through a couple of years ago asking if they could take our STEM school students through the same experience. What we found at the time was that Cabot Oil was behind all of the information being passed out at the time, and we turned it down for that reason. We didn't feel that the STEM school students were mature enough to handle that. Now we're throwing it at the fifth, sixth, eighth, and ninth, what, fifth, sixth, and eighth and ninth grade students. I would ask you to reconsider the appropriateness of this whole situation. It was the same group, same name, okay, but what they did was they were financed, they were backed by, the whole thing was a front for Cabot Oil. Numbers 24 and 25 are identical. I don't know whether we're buying two combination of them, or whether that's simply a single, an oversight. Same thing with 101 and 102, which are identical also.
Actually, Dr. Childs, 24 and 25 are different schools. One is H. Falcon, one is Heights Terrace.
Okay, got it. Okay. And number 39, I would also express my concern. We have some of our most aggressive parents with children who are plenty bright are putting their kids in, they're born on September the 15th, and they're putting their kids in kindergarten in one of the outlying nursery schools, kindergarten type arrangements. I hate to see these kids sitting in a kindergarten classroom for round two. It makes no sense to me, okay? I don't see that it saves anything in terms of personnel, or space, or anything else like that. And along with number 40, I would request very much that you folks keep tabs for us and maybe present monthly how many people have been excluded because of this whole arrangement, okay, and what happens to them subsequently, okay? So if you exclude six people this month, then next month are those folks taken care of because they do have three proofs of residency. It's hard to come up with three proofs of residency when you move into this district. It's just not there, so. Lastly, I would, well, two other things, I'm sorry. 93, I would also comment that the previous item had been that you had to be doing something that involved the kids and required the kids in order to be able to get Act 29 clearance, if you would, and that's not, I hope that's going to continue to be a consideration. And then finally, on numbers 62 through 76, I see an awful lot of very familiar names of excellent teachers and staff members from this school district, and I hope they have a very nice retirement, and I'm very sorry that the school district is losing it.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Anyone else, Mr. Fiume?
That's it, Mr. President.
Okay, G. approved the board minutes. Meeting minutes, regular board meeting, January 26, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba, roll call.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion pass.
Special board meeting, February 15, 2016.
We did the January 26th.
We need the second one.
We need a motion on.
Make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Reba.
All in favor of the February 15th minute, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
And treasures report for January 2016?
Somewhere.
Mr. Reba?
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Reba, roll call.
On the treasures report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Dr. Butler?
Curriculum and instruction, approve items 1 through 4 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the board members?
Are they, do we know that everyone has their clearances and?
Yes, yes, Mr. Zola.
Okay, do we get copies of those? I mean, you, your office, do you have that kind of stuff on file so that we know that they do have that?
We can certainly secure those. Yes, sir.
Roll call, Mr. Reba.
Numbers 1 through 4, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items 5 through 11 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Clarence, just to clarify on number 10, I've actually had some indirect dealings with Junior Achievement while I was at King's College finishing up my undergraduate, and I don't, I know there are several businesses that do participate, excuse me, participate in that program, PPNL, I believe, being one of them. There are several financial institutions participating in that program, and Cabot may have participated in that as well. As far as the financing of the program, I'm not entirely sure, but I know that they are doing some really great work with kids up there. And actually, if I were in fifth, sixth, eighth, or ninth grade, I would be excited for that program because I do think it's, I do think it's a beneficial program for those kids.
I can explain that, Dr. Childs, thank you. They offer two programs. BizTown is for grades five and six, and Finance Park is for grades eight and nine. Junior Achievement covers all costs, this is in the motion except for transportation. They do 10 units of preparation, if you will, 10 units of study and preparation for the experience, which is a simulation in business, experiential, hands-on activities that really, I mean, I think they're extremely valuable. I don't know who's supporting it, but I can tell you that our students are looking forward to it.
Mr. John, I have a question, just real quickly. On like, number six here, are they talking, they're going to be talking to our students and like, how much time is taken from the classroom in order to do a lot of this? And what happens to the information they get? Like in number eight, when they're completed with their research?
Yes.
Who gets that? I mean, where, is it released anywhere, or?
Yes, Mr. Zola, we do have, typically, we can ask and have, and can request, and oftentimes receive the results of the study. With regard to number six, I've been told it would minimally impact students relative to just completing surveys, certainly no class out of, excuse me, no time out of class. I think the impact on instruction time would be extremely minimal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think one of the most important things these students should learn today is financial literacy. Speaking from a financial standpoint, a business standpoint, Jared, I'm sure you do, Vinnie is a, Bob, everybody in this board would certainly recommend that. Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 5 through 11, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items 12 through 17 with one motion.
So moved.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Reba, roll.
Numbers 12 through 17, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items 18 and 19 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on 18 or 19? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 18 and 19, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Special education ESL and alternative education approve items 20 through 20.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 20 through 22, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items 23 through 27 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 23 through 27, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Little snack.
Transportation, number 28, recommend board approve the attached.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 28, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Security and Career Center, approve items 29 through 32 with one motion.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 29 through 32, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items 33 through 36 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Anyone? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 33 through 36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Technology, approve items 37 through 40 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
Are these all budgeted positions?
37 is, 38 is, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Reba?
Numbers 37 through 40, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I'm 39.
Ice habit, motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items 41 through 43 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Just on number 43, the hot water heaters, you see a price there of $18,850. And I just want to call attention to our maintenance department, our business office and that, because I just want to share with the public, because I think it's important to know that originally, when the hot water heater went down in Freeland, it came up, and the initial cost just on getting an engineer in to look at it, we had one, there was one price of $10,000 and another price of 12, I think it was 12.5. In discussing it between board members and the business office and all, it was decided to take a look at whether or not the maintenance department can go ahead and look into it, and the estimated cost originally was $100,000 plus another $10,000 to $12,000 in engineering fees. And the work of Mr. Reba, the, Mr. Shemansky and all, looking into it, digging into it, calling manufacturers of water heaters and getting them to the site, and then bringing contractors to the site and looking at it, we ended up from $100,000, or 100 really, and $10,000 to $18,850. So, good job, guys, and I think that's what it's all about. We're going to look and question before we just accept, you know, the first price that's thrown out there.
Good job. That's exactly right.
Any other comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 41 through 43, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Finance, approve items 44 through 52 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 44 through 52, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Number 53, recommend board approve as per procedure number 29 of the rental policy to waive all fees for the African-American, African missions project.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments?
Is there any entertainment of changing this to just the rental fee?
So moved.
We would need a.
Motion.
An amendment and a second to the amendment.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to amend to waive the rental fee.
Only.
Only, not the maintenance or security fees.
Second. Questions, comments?
Do you want to include number 94 in that, because that is also?
Can we make the amendment to include all of the rentals?
Well, we have a motion on 53, what an amendment. I think we should probably do them separate.
One at a time?
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions, comments on number 53?
So on Mrs. Kay's amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ice habit on the amendment noting Mr. O'Donnell's no vote. So on the motion as amended to waive just the rental fee, number 53, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ice habit, again noting Mr. O'Donnell's no vote.
Number 54, recommend board approve as procedure number 29 of the rental policy to waive the rental fee.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
54, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
55, recommend board approve as. Fifty-five, recommend board approve as per procedure number twenty-nine of the rental policy to waive all fees for King's College in conjunction with the Hazelton Area School District.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
I believe this is for all, waiving all fees once again. Are we gonna do that?
Well, this is kids' university, which-
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is during the day.
All right.
It's during the day, so you would want to, like, let the public know that. Because it's during the day, we do not incur any-
Costs.
Extra costs.
Maintenance or security.
Maintenance or security, because they're already there.
And our students directly benefit from this program.
You're right, Mr. Zola, my mistake.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Fifty-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Fifty-six, recommend board approve changing the factor to two sixty for calculating administrators' unused vacation days from two twenty.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Fifty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Fifty-seven bills.
We gonna do those individually, or?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion if we need one.
Second.
Any questions on any of the bills?
Mr. Krasinski, can you pull up fifty-seven E?
So if I'm not mistaken here, this, this bill here from Benish now, that was for Freeland. And it was a cost of forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, correct, for, for the work that was done?
This is Barry.
This is Harmon Geis modular. This is E.
This is for the coordinate punch list with the contractor.
Okay.
And the, uh-
Yeah.
Okay.
All contractors.
That's fine, Mr.
Okay, thank you.
So for, for C then, for the? Yeah, so. Okay. But now we have the Benish bill up here, right? Okay.
This is Benish, now this is the one that on page two is the detail.
Okay, so the project was, Eddie, forty-eight, five? I believe is the number that we got from it?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And down here on the bottom, up to date, just in engineering fees, about nine thousand dollars?
How that, how that fee for nine thousand is because we were gonna, originally, they wanted to do two schools, change the line. So they did a, they did spec bids for two separate schools. It was drums and Freeland. And then when we got the bids in, we didn't have the money to do both schools. So they, we just chose to do two. They did do specs and for two schools also, part of that nine thousand dollars.
So.
Actually, Mr. Zola, also, we did end up rebidding it. The first time we put it out, we had bid one and bid two. Second time, they had to curtail the specs slightly with the scope, and they made bid one and an alternate bid. And we declined the alternate, but accepted bid one, which was Freeland.
So ten thousand before it's over? Because I understand that this isn't the last bill. There might be another bill coming yet on top of this. For forty, for a fifty thousand dollar project, it's just a lot of money. And that's the type of stuff that we want to start watching real close, right, Ed? Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills? Mr. Reba?
Fifty-seven, A through G, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no votes?
C?
Any.
Mr. Zola, C and E, any other no votes? Ice habit, motion passes, noting Mr. Zola's no's.
Superintendent's Agenda, approve items fifty-eight through sixty-three with one motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions on?
Mr. John, I'd just be remiss if I did not notice the retirement of John Buscher, sixty-three. You know, if I had to, looking back on my Valley Elementary days, if I had to, or just looking at throughout my entire experience in the Hazelton Area School District, if I had to, you know, calculate who my favorite teachers were, John Buscher would be one of those teachers. The connection that he had with the kids, hundreds of kids, maybe thousands of kids over the years, is really insurmountable. And John Buscher will be missed greatly in this district.
I echo your sentiments, absolutely. Any other comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers fifty-eight through sixty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Provide him sixty-four through seventy-eight with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Uh, Mr. John, if I may, I know Dr. Childs has already mentioned this, and now Jared has mentioned Mr. Buscher, but there's fifteen names on there. And I believe out of those fifteen names, I must know at least ten to twelve of them that are retiring. You're talking about real heavy hitters here as teachers and whatever they did. Great people, served this district for a number of years, and they're definitely gonna be missed. Obviously, everybody's replaced, but these people will definitely be missed. The other thing I would add is I would wish them a long, healthy and happy retirement.
I have to individually comment on sixty-five as well. Monica Whitek, such an integral part of the swim program at Valley Elementary Middle School. I believe she was a diving coach as well at the high school level. But Monica Whitek, if, again, she, she was an integral part of teaching me how to swim. So, again, sorely missed, she will be as well. As well as seventy-three, Ellen McBride. Known her for, she's probably known me since I was still in diapers with going to baseball games and with my brother. She was an integral part of the Booster Club program. And again, she will be a, an asset that we will certainly miss in the high school.
Anyone else? Mr. Reba?
Number sixty-four through seventy-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Mr. John, if I may, just quickly say that we started a new tradition last spring, and at the end of the year, we gather all the district faculty together in the auditorium, and we recognize each and every retiree. We give them an opportunity to offer some parting comments to their colleagues. And what was a little bit of a risk in terms of, hey, should we do this or not? Turned out to be a fantastic celebration, a fantastic celebration for people who have dedicated significant years and given so much to the district. We're gonna be doing the same thing this year. And directors, I'll let you know when that is, if you'd like to attend. But it was such a great event, we will certainly do it again this year. Thank you. Approve, approving items seventy-nine through eighty-nine with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments?
Are they all budgeted? They're all four positions? Eighty-eight and eighty-nine, I see, are not replacements.
Eighty-eight and eighty-nine were approved back in November. And these positions are sit, assisting-type positions for our counselors district-wide. And, Mr. Zola, these generated out of a concern that our counselors were overwhelmed, I guess might be an appropriate word in terms of, particularly as we go into the season for PSSAs. So these two individuals, if approved, as you can see, will be traveling from school to school, assisting the counselors with clerical duties so that the counselors can dedicate themselves to the very most important aspects of their job.
Okay.
So how many hours a day is this?
Number eighty-six was budgeted. Eighty-eight and eighty-nine were not budgeted. And to be honest with you, I'm not certain on eighty-seven.
Mrs. Kay, we'd like to know how many hours a day?
Four point five for eighty-eight and eighty-nine.
Secretary, I'm sorry, Doc, is four point five, yes.
Four point five.
No benefits.
Five days a week?
Five days a week, school year term. So they're one hundred and eighty-day people, two and a half hours a day.
So if they're not budgeted, though, how, where, where's the money gonna come from?
We'll just be overspending that category.
It's nothing against the individuals' names that are on here, nothing whatsoever. It just comes down to the budget. I mean, dollars and cents, we're in some rough times, and I think in for more coming up. Can we vote on these separately, or?
Can we make a motion to take eighty-eight and eighty-nine off until we discuss this at another meeting?
You can.
Yes, we can.
We have, uh-
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to take eighty-eight and eighty-nine off until it's discussed to see if we could fit it into the budget.
I'll second it.
Table eighty-eight, eighty-nine?
Yes.
Any comments from the board members?
Technically, we can't comment on the table. We should vote on the motion to table. On the motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion to table passes, noting Mr. O'Donnell's no vote. So the original motion will be seventy-nine through eighty-seven.
We have a motion on it, don't we, or do we?
Yes. All in favor of numbers seventy-nine through eighty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items ninety and ninety-one with one motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Reba?
Numbers ninety and ninety-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Ninety-two, recommend board approve unpaid military leave of absence.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Ninety-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Ninety-
Just if we can, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We should probably vote on number ninety-four next, and then ninety-three after that one, if we're going to waive those fees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Number ninety-four.
Number ninety-four, recommend board approve as per procedure number twenty-nine of the rental policy to waive all fees for the Miss Greater Hazelton Scholarship Organization.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
Can we make the same amendment to that?
Yes.
So we'd like to make the amendment to waive the rental fee, but that's all. No maintenance or security fees will be waived.
Is that in your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Comments in the motion? Mr. Reba, the table?
On the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ice habit on the amendment noting Mr. O'Donnell's no vote. On the amended motion for number ninety-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ice habit, noting a no vote again.
Ninety-three, recommend board eliminate procedure number twenty-nine, general provisions and procedures for use of school facilities from policy number seven oh seven, use of school facilities. This will eliminate waiving of any fees for any organization.
So moved.
Sorry. Questions or comments?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Reba?
Number ninety-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ice habit, noting Mr. O'Donnell's no vote.
Ninety-five, recommend board approve the expulsion for student sixteen-eleven.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Ninety-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ninety, excuse me, Mr. Reba? Ninety-six, recommend board approve the expulsion for student sixteen-twelve.
So moved.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
Ninety-six, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Ninety-seven, recommend board approve the expulsion for student sixteen-thirteen.
So moved.
Second. Questions? Mr. Reba?
Ninety-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Ninety-eight, recommend board approve the expulsion for student number sixteen-fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
Ninety-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Number ninety-nine, recommend board approve the expulsion for student number sixteen-fifteen.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
Ninety-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Number one hundred, recommend board approve the second year of the Arts and Humanities Academy pilot program for the sixteen-seventeen school year. The cap for the program shall be one hundred and twenty-five, with a minimum of fifteen ninth-grade students in each studio class. The audition, interview, and application process shall remain consistent with that of the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year. The second-year pilot program shall be at no additional expense to the district.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
Number one hundred, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
One hundred and one, recommend board approve the job description.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
Number one oh one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Recommend board approve the job description.
So moved. Second.
Comments, criticisms, comments or questions? Long day. Oh, God.
I don't want to criticize you, but you shouldn't have said that.
I know I shouldn't. Mr. Reba?
Number one oh two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
One oh, one oh three, recommend board approve Laurie Trovich, six point five.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Good evening, my name is Anthony Stanzio, I was here last month. I have four topics today, so. First one-
It's only on, on the agenda item now. At the end of the meeting, you'll have the opportunity to speak on any other topic you wished.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we just have a couple more to go over yet.
Only two more, that's all.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Number-
Any comments or?
So both of these, I'm, one oh three and one oh four, I see replacement, so I'm gonna assume budgeted?
Replacement positions.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reba, on one oh three, roll call?
One oh three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
One oh four, recommend board approve Kathy Tomczyk, six point five, special education, paraprofessional, Valley Elementary Middle School.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
One oh four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
One oh five, recommend board approve Rena Hansick.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
One oh five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Anything from any board members? Mr. Stanzio? You have three minutes on the clock.
Good evening. I have four topics. One is concerning, I'm still waiting for written acknowledgement of my daughter's statement that she provided last month, that we won the fourteenth. The second one is I have an issue concerning this student work permit, one dealing with the, this parking permit. the, this parking permit, and the third is concerning about an inappropriate language of a teacher. The first time I was before this board was several years ago, concerning the behavior contract. I had two vice principals threaten me that if I didn't sign this behavior contract, that my daughter would be suspended and I would be subject to a three hundred and fifty-dollar a day fine. So then, that night, I came to the board, Mr. Antonelli told me that the behavior contract was not mandatory, was only a teaching aid, and that there would be no reprisals against the student. And I thought that was an issue. And now, just recently, it's happened again. My daughter came home with this generic behavior contract, and she said that I had to sign it. So, I sent the teacher a letter, and I asked her, I said, "Have you call me in for a meeting because I want her to explain things." She didn't explain it. She told my daughter that if I don't sign it, that she would be, that she would be suspended, or she would get a zero on her syllabus. So, I signed the document under duress. And I have here, if I may, I have a copy of the letter I sent to the teacher and a copy of what I signed. May I approach? At that first meeting, I believe it was Mr. Antonelli, when he said it was only a teaching aid and he used it for years, I asked him, if I remember correctly, because they had the board meeting videotaped, I said, "It was such a good idea, then have it duly promulgated." Because my opinion that the only behavior contract the school board needs is the student handbook. Got a good idea, put it in there. I don't appreciate that if I don't sign a document that's not even duly promulgated, that I'm going to be, my daughter's going to be threatened with a zero on her syllabus. Don't appreciate it. I mean, I had it a couple of years ago with two vice principals. Now, concerning the, last month you waived my three minutes, I'm going to need a little bit more than three minutes this time.
Go ahead. Yep.
Okay. The next one I want to talk about is this application for a student parking permit. Let me say that I am, you know, the school needs order and discipline and rules, I'm all for that. I mean, that's, but I was examining the language on this form. This is your own form here for this application. The first paragraph, it talks about public property which is under the control of the school, and then the second paragraph talks about the school property. So, I was confused about that. So then, I went up to the courthouse, and I have another puzzling thing here. You're willing to make a copy of this if you want, but this is my copy, I have to get it back. In nineteen sixty-eight, the Hazleton Area School District sold this property to the Hazleton Area School Authority for two hundred and fifty-three thousand plus, about one point seven million of today's dollars. And then, I went over to the other records here, and then it appears to me that the school then was, began leasing the property from this new authority. That this is, I mean, this is, I mean, this is what I'm trying to glean here at this preliminary stage. From reading old newspaper articles, this authority that was created, they were both classified as corporations, this new corporation, the school authority, was the building financing agent. That's how they described it, whatever that is. Well, getting back to this parking permit, I would agree if you want to have information concerning, because the car, the car that my daughter drives is mine, it's registered to me. If you want, you know, the make, model, VIN number, proof of insurance, I'll agree to that. The one thing I don't agree is this, that I have to waive consent of search. I mean, I will submit an affidavit that my daughter's not going to have any contraband or whatever in her car, and then if she will ever do so, then you can arrest me for sworn falsifications to authorities. My position is that my inherent rights, my constitutional rights are very important, and I do not like to waive them just summarily for no reason. And I'm, I, so I make a stand on that. I mean, if you want the three dollars for a permit, that's fine. You want information about the vehicle, that's reasonable as well. But, now, when I came into this building, I agreed, I volunteered to a search because of safety. I emptied my pockets, wore a metal detector, that to me is reasonable for safety inside the building. For, to do this in a parking lot, that's not the same. The other part is I have, concerning the student work permit, I checked into that, and I cannot consent to it. When I was a teenager, it was my parents that issued me a work permit. We had pre-existing labor laws in place. If I wanted a job, I had to bring the application home, and it was my, one of my parents that co-signed, because being under eighteen years of age, you're not allowed to enter into a contract of yourself. But now, at first, I thought this student work permit pertain to, if a student had to leave early, say, two o'clock to go to a job, well, they would be permission, you know, a valid excuse to leave school. But now, I've been reading into it, it's like, if I'm forced, my daughter wants to get a job, so if I'm forced to sign this, this application for a work permit, I'm asking for legal intent. What am, I says, if I put my name on this paper, what am I waiving, what am I surrendering, or what am I pleading guilty to? I like that in writing. Because I have to know what I'm getting myself involved in. It's just the habit with government, they just kind of remove the fine print on application forms. Now, the last, the first one I mentioned was concerning my daughter's, she wrote a statement, I believe it was on the fourteenth of last month. Her allegation was that a teacher dropped her phone and it got damaged. I submitted papers, I was expecting by now to receive a written acknowledgement from the school board. I had, I had someone from the school leave a message on my cellphone about an incident number. I can't, I won't even mention it because to me, that's hearsay. I submitted a complaint to the general counsel and to the district attorney's office. And if I may, this is a copy of a letter, because I know the first district attorney sent you a copy. So, this is my response to what the district attorney wrote.
Yes, sir, I did receive that.
No.
Okay, thank you. Thought you meant the judgment from the, thank you.
That's my response to his. So, I've kind of presented my four issues, and I'll leave it now for any questions.
Mr. Sanzola, from my seat, I'd be happy to, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'd be happy to, first of all, read your letter in entirety when I can concentrate on it and respond to you with regard to your.
I mean, if you want, sir, please excuse me for interrupting. I said, if you want to sit down and just have a, just a general off-the-record meeting, you know, we'll get to know each other. I mean, I had no intentions of starting any kind of crusade, I was just hoping that my daughter could go and get through her twelve years and graduate and move on. But I said, a few years ago, when I was confronted with that, I had to sign this behavior contract, or she's going to be suspended, and three hundred and fifty dollars a day fine, that's when I said, no, I, that's when I confronted Mr. Antonelli, and I thought the matter was settled. So, I just, I mean, for example, I don't think that's appropriate conduct. I mean, to me, a teach, anybody, there should be no bullying by anybody in school, anywhere.
Right.
And I don't appreciate that I have to, like, sign my name under duress on a document that to me just doesn't even belong. Because, like I said, we've got rules, the government class, and you're in the student handbook.
I'd be happy, if you want to stick around here for a minute, Mr. Sanzola, we can actually schedule a meeting, I can get it on my counter, I'd be happy to speak with you.
I would appreciate that.
Mr. Sanzola, where does your daughter go to school?
She's in Chris Center, eleventh grade.
I was administrator in this district for twenty-eight years, and never knew anybody could get fined three hundred and fifty dollars if you didn't sign a paper.
Well, that's what the information, I'm not going to, I will gladly tell you that the, these, these employees, their names off-record, I'm not going to mention them now.
I'd like, I would like to hear those names.
Okay?
I'll stick around also.
I'm saying, is that, I mean, out of courtesy, I re.
I appreciate that.
I'm not going to mention any names.
Thank you, sir.
The one, the one document I gave you does have the teacher's name on it, but like I said, that's not mentioned. I mean, I believe, out of respect, there should be some kind of confidentiality until you would decide otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, sir.
I will, I presented my four issues, and if you want to have a, an ex parte meeting, I would appreciate it.
So would we. We'd like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Slusser, stick around, please. Anyone else? Dr. Childs?
Two questions of the board. First off, in noticing that Mrs. McBride is retiring as head nurse, again, I certainly echo Mr. O'Donnell's comments, but she is the one who has been most directly involved with the mass groups of people leaving these, being expelled from school for things such as varicella and things of that nature. I'm hoping that the board will act on the suggestion I made previously about having the school, the head school physician examine the initial case upfront before she indeed departs from the district. I think that would be rather difficult to throw on somebody else's shoulders.
Who is the head school physician, by the way, Doc?
Jim Cagiano is right now.
Who?
Cagiano.
I thought there were a whole bunch of doctors.
Yeah, there are, but the one that, you know, when we, we voted not too long back to, to pay him a hundred dollars a month to sign off on all the, the various and sundry forms that have to be done by OT, PT, and all that sort of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
So, that, at least in my eyes, that makes him the head school physician. Second item, again, I'm noticing the approaching time for selecting students for the STEM School. Once again, I would reiterate that I'm, I'm hoping that you folks will see it fit to have some sort of an interview process that involves person-to-person in that whole process, as you do already with the Arts and Humanities School.
You did look at that list I gave you?
I'm sorry.
The list I gave you last week with the number?
Yes, I saw that.
I don't know if that helped you at all?
It helped some. Again, it's, it still reflects the disproportionate number of students coming from Valley.
Let me ask you a question, Doctor, if there's people, regardless of what school they come from.
Sure.
Should they be eliminated from that program because somebody else from, there wasn't a proportion from the other school?
The, the, the way that I see it, Mr. John, is, number one, you're striving to get equal education in all schools. Right now, we don't have it. So somehow, you have to compensate for that. Number two thing that I see is that some of the students are like my daughters, you know, are, as parents, and I'll simplify it a little bit, but we told them, basically, your job is to be a student. You learn, okay, you achieve, and we expect you to do well. And they did so, okay, but we relieved them of babysitting duties, we relieved them from having to go out and work in the summertime if they didn't want to, whatever. We basically had the resources to be able to say to them, "Look, your job is to do this, and that's fine." There are a number of families in this community that do not, that do not have that, that ability to do that. So, what you're doing is you're saddling students who are coming from some of these schools with jobs such as babysitting for, and again, we have one student at the STEM School now, who is outstanding. She's, does what I couldn't possibly do in my own. She takes care of, of a handful of siblings throughout the week while her parents work in New York, okay? She helps them, she dresses them, feeds them, she does their homework with them, she does the whole business like that. She does, starts her own homework at eleven o'clock at night, she goes to bed at twelve, she gets up at five and finishes her homework. Okay, I couldn't do that, okay? But she's able to do that, and a lot of other people are doing the same sort of thing, but they can't quite get over the hump that she's managed to get over. And I, I think that there should be some consideration for what these kids are doing, because their organizational abilities are perhaps considerably above and beyond what you're getting from my family. The failure to recognize that that requires something above and beyond, and will indeed impact their abilities to utilize the STEM School experience, I, you know, I see that as being a sad situation.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Casey?
In regards to tabling eighty-eight and eighty-nine, the guidance department clerical positions, were you able to fill, did you get another guidance counselor last year? I remember a board meeting where so many guidance counselors, families, parents came and said, "Our kids need more counselors," they, our, we had principals, I believe, that stood up and said, "We need more help in our guidance department, these kids." Did we get another guidance counselor, or was this the compromise for that?
We did, Ms. Hurst, and we got one additional counselor. I can't remember exactly what time of the school year that was, but yes, we secured an additional counselor.
Mr. Teeter.
Yes, Mr. Teeter?
So, I just, I sincerely hope that we find a place in the budget for this, because I know our guidance department needs that support, these kids, I mean, I don't know with one extra guidance counselor if that alleviated the concerns and the problems, but I remember that board meeting vividly, I remember being here and listening to their cries for help. So, I sincerely hope that these no-benefits, part-time, paid clerical positions in order to alleviate the stress of the guidance counselors gets a second look. But I understand your budget concerns, but I feel like this is something that really specifically, tangibly benefits a lot of students and a lot of schools, so, thank you.
Thanks, Case. Anyone else? Motion from the board?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Meeting adjourned.